Try not to listen to me. If at all possible.
I hope she gets it. Yeah, was unsure if they get a chance to talk to her much this morning. Appreciate it.
He said hi to me and I'm like, oh, I know you. I know you. I just didn't think he'd pay.
That's good for you.
Yeah, Troy, I think, I think you should go to that one.
I'd be interested, you know, it's good to hang out.
Cause you're a legislative advocacy person.
I think that'd be interesting.
Got ice cream after breakfast. And help him with his wife's pregnancy.
Rest today, Mr. Bedwell?
I only got one of the pre-quarter holes done in two hours.
Okay, at 6:00 PM, we'll call our meeting in order. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Paul, please.
Here.
Mr. Frings.
Here.
Ms. St. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Inda.
Here.
Mr. Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Benbow.
Here.
Chris, first item on our agenda is comments from citizens and delegations. Do we have anything today? And we can move right on to our school showcase, Lincoln High School Advanced Placement classes.
So Dr. Watson is here this evening to share with you the results from their most recently completed advanced placement exams at Lincoln, so.
Good evening, I'm Rod. So I have a report on the advanced placement scores. Just spoiler alert, we're very proud of them. This is something our school does very, very well. The AP teachers put in some of their comments on here. Just keep in mind that a few of them, one's retired and one moved to a different district, so we only have some of their comments for how this went so well for us. A quick overview, we'll read the whole thing today, but just the idea that we had a very high test sign up for this. So having 248 students take the course, then 212 take the test, that's a very good ratio. Of the tests were taken, 190 of those students are to three or higher. And so that means that those students will get some various levels of college credit when they get to college. That also shows that they're competing very well nationally against other students taking similar courses, which is a good measuring stick for their course. Our students succeeded the state average, I guess I already did, state average on every exam. Nearly every class improved on the average from the previous year. And so not only are we doing very well, we're doing better than we did before, which is also good. So we're going in the right direction. But the significant growth in dual enrollment courses, so students don't have to take AP classes to get college credit anymore. It's also, it's actually one of the riskier ways to do that. But even with the growth of the UW GB classes and the mid-state classes, there are still a lot of students that take this option because they, they know they can be successful with it. It's often to draw the teachers that are teaching the courses. Over the past five years, 25 more students and 50 more exams have been added and the success rate has improved from 72% to 88%. That's a very, very good success rate. So the following slides will show a little bit more about how students performed in each course. Feel free to stop me if I speak too quickly, which I do sometimes, or if you have any questions. There we go. Okay, so here's a little data to show you the averages. So you can see the total number of students with three or above on the left went down for a while. I think we can all probably assume we know why that is with what's happened in education, but then it's rising now. And this whole number of students that we have taking it in our school summary on the right, you can see we're staying pretty steady, given the challenges of getting students interested in AP, we're staying pretty steady even going up. Number of exams has gone up, number of students with three plus or above has gone up substantially, and the percentage of total AP students three or above going from 72 to 88. That just speaks to the excellent work those teachers are doing and that the students are bringing. By the way, you'll see, none of the teachers gave themselves credit. Mr. Rasmussen and I connected with each one of them after we got the scores back and every single one of them said the students did it, which probably explains how they did so well, because their teachers give them the credit. There we go. Okay, so human geography and AP US history, it's probably no secret that Mr. Bertinoli is a very, very good teacher and he did just an excellent job of both these courses. So on the left, you have human geo classes generally taken early in high school. This is a class that students, we had 29 take the test last year and 83% of them got three or better. This is a test that nationally, students do pretty well on this one. Our, ours do even better than that. This year it's going to be taught by Mr. Gavin Dinjus, one of our new teachers. On the right, you have AP US history. Not a lot of students took the AP test in that because they had a dual credit option for that class, a college credit option, I mean. And so they will not have that this year because Mr. Bertinoli had unique qualifications. And so as we try to replace those qualifications, we'll have more students want to take AP push with Mr. Tully. Mr. Tully and Mr. Dinjus both went to the conference this year with Mr. Rasmussen's recommendation and they both loved it. The AP world is a whole world of connected teachers and resources and so they just ate it up. So we do expect to have numbers in the AP classes. I believe we're at about 45, but I don't know how many are going to take the test.
So Mr. Tully was a first-year teacher this year, so he'll be entering his second year and Mr. Dinjus, this will be his first-year teaching for us this upcoming year.
Yes. AP math, and so the math teachers put their names over on the right. They refused to have separate slides because they, they're a team. They're very adamant about that, that all this work that they do is done together, they compare data together. So AP pre-calc is Mrs. Moyer, AP calc is Mrs. Thomas, and AP statistics is Mr. Pyan. You can see their scores there, so going down, AP calc averaged at 4.22, extremely impressive for pre-calc, I mean, with a 97% three or above. And if you know Mrs. Moyer, she's outstanding at what she does. AP calculus, a very, very challenging course and a very challenging test. 14 students took it, 93% got a three or better, with an average of 4.3, which is just through the roof. And then AP statistics over on the right, just down a little bit from last year, but still very good overall score. So those three, our math program is feeding into those well. They've been working very hard to make sure the right classes are feeding into these AP classes, that's a work in progress, and AP pre-calc is a pretty new course, but they're pretty happy with where it's at. Last year, their first year for pre-calc?
Yeah, last year was first year for pre-calc.
Mrs. Reeves teaches AP macroeconomics and AP government, usually about one section of each. So you can see macro, we had 21 students take the test and every one of them got a three or above. And Mrs. Reeves said it's because the students are awesome. And I was in there a couple times, they really were eating it up and she assigns a lot of reading.
AP macro and micro, but every other year, so you have to plan your student, just for enrollment purposes.
And AP government over on the right. We had not as many students take this one, but very good success rate and a very high average score of 3.38.
And Paula teaches that one, too?
She does, yes, and she'll have it again this year. Okay, AP psych, she added some pictures for us. So that quote there is from Kylie, she wrote, "This past year, design my course to be very hands-on," I saw that. And so they had a lot of reading, but they also did a lot of experiments and diagrams and things where they could get up and talk about psychology. So she had to pretty incorporate experiments, projects, movies, games, to make the curriculum more engaging. She had multiple checks on the students throughout the year to gather ideas and what helped them learn best and try to incorporate it all. Kylie's, Mrs. Barnes is very big on making sure the kids don't sit still for the whole 70 minutes, because it can be a long time when you're a teenager. It's a long time for adults. And then she wrote at the bottom, "The students expressed they liked repetition as well." So pictured above are a few ways we study the structure and functions of neurons. And so as you can see from her scores in the right column, she's getting better and better teaching this class. She was mentor of Mr. Galetta, who's going to fill in a little bit this year, too. So she had a good person to train her. AP chemistry, so we didn't have many students take this one, it's a very rigorous course. And they had a 3.71 average. I think this is one, yeah, so this, this class is student, students usually going into their career fields, we had seven students take it this year. We're not going to offer it this year, we didn't have no students interested in it. So it'll build us an interest and offer again in '26, '27. Looking, promise. There we go. Okay, AP English literature and composition is taught by the Estable Mr. Jensen in his last year, so we had 24 students take the test and every single one of them got a three or better. And if you sat in his room, you'd know why, like, it's complete engagement. The students are expected to do a lot of reading, a lot of writing, a lot of thinking. It's just, it's a place where it's hard to leave because you, it's intoxicating. This class we taught with Mr. Cleveland this year, he did a virtual professional film with the summer, but. Okay, so it's a very good program, it's one of our shining stars, we featured in our school profile. We hope to attract students to come to Lincoln High School for having rigorous gifted education and AP programs that, that jewel in our crown for that. And so students compete very well. And so it's, being standards-based and norm-based, the fact that we compete well against other schools that offer similar programs show that our teachers had developed themselves very well. And then, as they would say if they were here, the students do a good job. And our trimester schedule honestly works in pretty well with AP, because you're not either taking the class way too early or way too late, you can get in the right sweet spot there. Strong enrollment numbers despite a downward trend nationally, because AP is struggling to compete with the college credit courses, shows our students willingness to challenge themselves, desire to prepare themselves for success after high school. So we're going to keep moving forward with it. We ask that student, teachers, when they take over a course, do the summer training with it. And there are other AP options that we're exploring in the future to bring more classes in. They're kind of challenging the schedule, but as you can see from the data you had here, it's worth it. It's a worthwhile struggle.
Any questions? It's impressive.
Maybe you said this, but I think it's admirable, too, that enrollment continues to go up in these when our actual enrollment goes down, so, you know, that's even more impressive for the increasing enrollment.
I agree.
In the AP.
In a year, I plan on very much pressuring a kid in my house to take one of these classes because he's already resisting them. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And what, as Dr. Watson said, is just one of the ways that our students can earn their college credits through either UW Green Bay as well as mid-state. So students have lots of opportunities to earn those credits. I know personally, we have a student who graduated last year who has 57 credits after graduating from Lincoln. So through all those opportunities that we're able to provide, it's quite a lot.
Save a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we can move on to approval of the minutes.
I would move to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 4th, excuse me, July 14th, and the special Board of Education closed meeting of July 14th be approved.
We have a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting of July 14th and the special Board of Education closed session meeting of July 14th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Let's move to business services. Kathy?
Thanks, John. The Educational Services Committee met on August 4th. The meeting was called to order at 6 o'clock PM and there was no public comment. There were two actionable items. Does anyone want either one held out? Okay. Then the first actionable item was Title VI of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is the Indian Education Formula Grant. Betsy Van Berkel, our assistant, one of our assistant directors of pupil services, shared that our district has been awarded the Title VI grant in the amount of $18,395. The goals of the grant include improving academic achievement, increasing cultural identity awareness, and enhancing parent engagement. The grant supports American Indian students through literacy initiatives, guest speakers, access to technology, field trips, and ongoing professional development for teachers throughout the year. And the committee recommends, and I move to approve, the acceptance of Title VI Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the Indian Education Formula Grant, in the amount of $18,395. The second actionable item was the Care Solace Partnership and Legacy Foundation Grant. Betsy again reported on this item and she noted that our district received a legacy foundation grant to extend our partnership with Care Solace for an additional four years. The grant supports services across the entire district. And the committee recommends, and I move to approve, a four-year extension with Care Solace effective July 1st, 2026 through June 30, 2030, with services fully funded through the Legacy Foundation Grant. The partnership aligns with WRPS's strategic framework commitment to establish a culture of physical, emotional, and intellectual wellness for students and staff.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Two updates. The first update was the seclusion and restraint report. Betsy was busy at our meeting. She explained that seclusion and physical restraint may be used only when a student's behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to the physical safety of the student or others, and it is the least restrictive intervention feasible. And during the '24-'25 school year, training sessions were held for building level crisis response teams. A total of 89 members were trained during the year, bringing our total to 111 trained staff, which is awesome. The primary goal is to enhance preparedness and ensure that effective crisis response plans are established in advance of any incidents. And in '24-'25, the district reported 22 incidents, which was a decrease from 35 incidents in '23-'24, and a significant decrease from prior years. Our superintendent, Ron Rasmussen, stated that we'll be monitoring the frequency of room clearances and this will help us identify patterns, assess the effectiveness of interventions, and inform future staff training and support needs. The second update was our multi, on our multi-level systems of support. And Julie Calerick, our other assistant director of pupil services, gave a nice presentation on this. She provided an update on this and talked about how the system supports our mission and beliefs that each student comes first and that all students in our district can learn, and that a safe, caring, and respectful environment is essential for learning. And our MLSS system ensures students receive the support they need when they need it, so they can reach their full potential, and the support includes academics, social, emotional, and behavioral supports. Julie reviewed the universal behavior definitions, which are used by all administrators. Behavior is classified as major and minor through a team-based decision-making process, and flow charts are used to promote consistency among staff across all buildings, which is especially important as students transition between schools within the districts. And Mr. Rasmussen stated that he's going to be incorporating this into some of the staff meetings, or I'm sorry, some of the administrative staff meetings this year, to encourage team-based discussion and decision-making by presenting scenarios about some of these issues, so that we are consistent from building to building. And Ron also stated that we're one of seven school districts in the state to receive the Early Reading Project grant totaling $80,000. Grove, Meathink, and Woodside Elementary are going to be participating in the initiative, and there was some nice coverage of that in local media. And finally, Julie emphasized that MLSS is a tool used to identify areas where students need support, to reemphasize that, and as well as opportunities to celebrate their successes. It's a framework to ensure every student receives the appropriate level of support that they need at the right time, and it's intended as a resource for all staff. Future agenda items were reviewed. In September, we'll be looking at the Every Student Succeeds Act, the District CII Parent Representatives, and Career and Technical Education Incentive Grant Funding. The meeting was adjourned at 6:47 PM, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the educational, the revised minutes of the Educational Services Committee meeting of August 4th, 2025.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Services Committee on August 4th, 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, Kathy. Next, we can move on to business services. John?
John, Business Services met on Monday, August 4th, and our meeting was called to order at 5:50. We had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we had one actionable item. Does anybody have any issues or questions with it? I think there are none. The item was a... It's Myron Scope Summary and Fee Proposal. Myron Construction has been working with the district and plunket race edge architects in preparation for facility study. They're developing high-level floor plans, establishing a construction timeline, and creating budgets for a community survey. Myron also supports the district with community engagement, outreach, graphic design, and general referendum support services. Myron is waiving all fees contingent upon the district contracting Myron for construction and management services during the project implementation and successful referendums. If the referendum is successful, the WRPS agrees, they enter in a construction management agreement with Myron. The committee moves, and I recommend, accepting the scope summary and fee proposal from Myron Construction.
We have a motion to approve BS 1. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We had updates and reports, a lot of it is back-to-school year purchases with software and a lot of the playground projects are wrapping up. Some of the technology is also coming in now. We had a update on the Washington Soccer Complex. Ahmed came in and gave us a PowerPoint presentation. Basically, the grassy or Rapids area soccer was kind of founded in, I believe, 1978. Soccer at Lincoln started in 1979. He showed us some backgrounds of what the field used to be, and they basically were running out of a shipping containers, how they were storing everything, putting every, all of the concession stuff, all of the equipment, everything was in one 20-foot shipping container. So that's how they started, and they ran the shipping container for almost eight years, I believe, 68 years before they got a building that they could put and house stuff in. He also showed us the updates to what they're, they currently went to the Legacy Foundation and received an award to upgrade the field facilities. They're going to put in new lighting, go to a LED-type lighting, kind of similar to what we have at the Lincoln Quadplex. They're gonna, they have, they got, received money to put in a new scoreboard to upgrade the, the storage facility or add on to the storage facility. And then the last thing they're going to put in is a new press box, which will be similar to the boxes, one of the designs is similar to the boxes used at the Quadplex, which they've been, those are very solid and very good wood units, so that would be a definite update there. There are also other updates as far as with the project that was approved for the blacktopping that I believe has been done now. And so if you wanted to drive by and see that, the Washington, you can also drive by some of the schools to see the playground complex. I have not seen if Woodside's building is up. Do we know if that is up? I saw the pile of materials there, but I didn't think they, I don't know if they, and that was about two weeks ago when I drove by there. So a lot of good things have been happening. We got information on the Wisconsin Retirement System, which increased 0.5%. And Aaron had a sheet with how it'll affect the school district and approximately $88,324 is the annual cost increase for the district. Very important is our Moody's credit rating. Our rating is still steady at AA3, which is high-quality and very low credit risk. We did have a brief discussion on how school finance works and how you get rewarded by having debt, so having debt is a good, good thing, because you do get reimbursement on that debt from the state. A lot of people don't understand how that works. So we did discuss having some sort of finance and a 101, you know, school finance 101 in the future at a school board meeting to let the public understand how the finance works and it's not like anything else you would do at home. We did also have some updates as far as donations. Scoreboard updates from McCain's, the dental suite, Springer, SAC Real Estate, and Pinnacle Performance. And then we did have a donation in the amount of $56,661 addressing period poverty from the Legacy Foundation. We did not have any future agenda items, so I move to accept the balance of meeting minutes from the Business Services Committee.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Service Committee on August 4th, 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you for the report.
Oh, we did adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we can move into Personnel Services. Troy?
Perfect, thank you, John. Personnel Services Committee met on Monday, August 4th. I just want to make sure we're looking at the revised handout here. The committee meeting met on August 4th. The meeting was called to order at 6:49 PM and we did not have any public comment. Before us tonight, there are six actionable items, but we will hold out PS 6 for further discussion in a couple of minutes. Any good with the remaining five? Any other items? Great. So our first one, PS 1, the committee recommends, and I move to approve of the following two-listed professional staff appointments. PS 2, the committee moves and I recommend to approve of the following three-listed support staff appointments. PS 3, the committee moves and I recommend to approve of the following listed support staff resignation. Our next item, PS 4, pertains to shift differential custodial and maintenance employees. Bryant Oswell, Director of Human Resources, shared with the committee last week that currently second and third shift custodial and maintenance employees receive 15 cents per hour for hours worked between 3:00 PM and 6:30 AM. With the move to Skyward, this would require the business office staff to manually enter these difference for each second and third shift employee. Current second and third shift employees would keep the shift differential increase, but this would be eliminated for all new employees. PS 4, the committee recommends, and I move to eliminate the second and third shift differential for all new custodial and maintenance employees effective August 11th, 2025. Our next item, PS 5, substitute teacher incentives. Mr. Oswell explained that there continues to be a shortage of substitute teachers. This incentive program has been in place for the past few school years, and substitute teachers have reached out to express their appreciation for this incentive program. On PS 5, the committee recommends, and I move to approve, substitute teacher bonus pay as follows. $300 bonus pay after 30 assignments, $550 bonus after 50 assignments, $900 bonus after 75 assignments, $1,500 bonus after 100 assignments, $2,380 bonus after 140 assignments, $3,300 bonus after 165 assignments, along with free lunch for substitute teachers on Mondays and Fridays be approved.
And we have a motion to approve PS 1 through PS 5. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next item, PS 6, pertains to dual enrollment stipend proposal. And just a little bit of backstory, and then we can open it up for discussions and questions. Ronald Rasmussen, Superintendent, reviewed the dual stipend proposal along with an update that our CTE grant could cover part of the stipends. Committee members had some questions and concerns about the added cost and whether this would be setting a precedent going forward. And just for our benefit, I want to take a minute to read the attachment out of last week, what the instructor requirements are for this mid-state stipend. So for our benefit, MSTC instructor requirements for a stipend to be paid for the number of students end of term graded for the school year. You are responsible for instructing your students and submitting the required information and documents when requested. Requirements include, but are not limited to, 1, submit course information, 2, syllabus, 3, registration, 4, verify the class roster to ensure students taking the course for college credit were enrolled, 5, faculty observation and professional development, 6, have students complete the mid-state course evaluation, 7, submit final grades and verify the grade roster, and 8, the last thing, the stipend is paid directly to the instructor from WRPS. And just the other thing to note for questions and discussions, correct me, Ron, if the district would be able to, the cost would be about $7,000, and then Eric would be able to...
Cover about $5,000.
$5,000.
Incentive.
Cost would be...
About $12,000 total.
$12,000 total. And $7,000 outside of Eric's area.
And the cost is higher for the Green Bay?
Green Bay is paid directly by UW Green Bay to those instructors because students pay tuition to UW Green Bay. So.
That's what I understood, that's what I thought.
We moved to, from UWSP to UW Green Bay, UW Green Bay does pay their instructors, which then, some of the mid-state, those that teach mid-state courses were like, is there an option for that to occur for us as well? So this came up in my listening session that I did with Lincoln staff, developed a proposal and presented it to you. The committee is very divided, which is why I believe the focus was to bring it to the full board for discussion.
Well, and I think, thank you to Ron, because when you first brought it to us, there was no money coming in from anywhere. It was just a straight, you know, the $12,000 expense. And so you did pursue it with Eric to see if there would be any CTE monies that could help, as well as going to mid-state to see if they would help at all. Mid-state was not willing to help, however, Eric was willing to put the $5,000 from CTE funds in, correct, for those courses that qualify under the CTE umbrella.
So you, and mid-state would, does not pay a stipend because they're not collecting tuition on those mid-state dual enrollment courses. Those are courses that are, you know, kind of a gratis course, back and forth. We certify people, they get that mid-state credit, mid-state doesn't see a tuition change, which is one of the reasons why stipend is lower than it is for UW Green Bay for a number of students. One of the questions that came up in committee is the proposal you have in front of you says 110... says a hundred and ten plus. So if you teach, that's not per class, it's the number of students that teacher would see during the year. So we have some teachers that teach multiple mid-state courses, so it's, that's not like, I have one class of twenty-eight, another with twenty-nine, so I get both those, and all those would add together to seven, I think that's what the numbers I said, total. So it is in addition to the budget, that is an unbudgeted expense at this time.
And I can see, I mean, I was one of the ones who's said no, both times that committee this kind of came through. While I understand there are additional, there's additional work that our staff is doing, Green Bay is paying that at no cost to the district, this is an extra cost to us, and I worry that we are setting ourselves up for, these teachers aren't the only ones who are doing additional work. And I think of our staff who work, for example, with students with IEPs, we know they have additional work. Our elementary teachers and staff members who coordinate after-school clubs and programming, I don't believe they're receiving a stipend for the additional work they're doing. So I just, knowing where we are in the tight budget that we have, I think this is putting us in a position that we are not prepared for and could open other requests. So that's kind of where I'm, that's why I will be voting no on this.
And I'm kind of swinging back and forth, because on the one hand, I always want to support our teachers when they're doing some additional work, but on the other hand, what concerns me about this is, like Elizabeth said, there's a lot of places where teachers are doing additional work, for example, all these AP teachers, and we're not doing anything extra for them. And they're putting a lot of extra time in it. And the list of work that the, the mid-state people are doing, it's not that out of the ordinary or that extreme. We have some large class sizes, I know you're tired of hearing me harp on that, but, you know, at fourth and fifth grade, very large class sizes, and we're not giving those teachers any extra stipends, you know, of class of fifteen versus a class of thirty. That's a real difference in the amount of work a teacher is doing. And while seven thousand dollars, and I thank Eric and, and you, Ron, for going to get that additional money from those, those CTE grants, you know, I, I mean, if every, every month it's a seven thousand here, or ten thousand there, or twelve thousand there, I mean, that, that really adds up. And then I, I go back to those class sizes of thirty kids, a fifth grade, and I, I get very concerned. So I honestly, I, I'm, I'm going back and forth because I do want to support our teachers, but at the same time, I'm not sure teaching these mid-state classes is that much more work than what a lot of teachers are doing in other places.
Questions?
I, no, I just have, I know I have a, a wife that taught both AP and, and worked with mid-state, or not, yeah, mid-state to get dual accreditation at, at NACUSA before she retired. And, you know, as far as, she did far more work with AP than she did with, I mean, she had summer training, she had that type of thing. So I would have to lean towards the, the idea of that if, if we are setting up stipends for that, it's probably more work done in AP preparation than there is probably in dual enrollment with, I mean, mid-state, I think you have to have a masters?
You have to have a masters or an industry certification in that area.
Right. So a lot of the teachers, I mean, that do teach that already had that, that certification covered, which they did pay for, for that, you know, but as far as a lot of the stuff for the AP, you do have to have some higher, sometimes higher education requirements, depending on the class and, and whether they're going to. So I would probably agree with you that as far as with our budget being tight and the fact that we have other teachers and a lot of staff doing a lot of extra work. I can see Elizabeth's point where, do we then have everybody coming in and asking for a stipend or something, and then what do we do? It's similar to with when we were, had people asking about, you know, we left for four years, we want credit, all that type of thing. It's like, if you set the precedent, then you have it, and you almost can't say no. So I would, I would probably agree with you two on that, that there are some other things that our teachers do that are much more vigorous and they're not getting a stipend for it.
And I did ask at committee if our mid, our teachers who are teaching dual credit classes, if they are required to attend, like, mid-state trainings or classes during the day. We are covering their sub for that, so that's not an additional.
If there's something that occurs during the day, we do cover that.
Correct, yes. So it's not an additional cost to them, so.
Anything else?
All right, the, the committee.
It'd be right for someone to make a motion and then have the board, yes, you don't want that motion.
Yeah. So you could just make a motion as PS six is forwarded.
Okay. I move to approve the dual enrollment stipend as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the dual enrollment stipend as presented. Can we have roll call, please, Chris?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
No.
Mr. Inda?
No.
Mr. Sparks?
No.
Ms. Stavensins?
No.
Ms. St. Myers?
No.
Mr. Crings?
Yes. Motion fails.
All right, with that, the committee meeting was adjourned at seven seventeen PM, and I would move to approve the balance of the revised minutes.
We have a motion to approve the revised meeting minutes of the Personnel Service Committee of August fourth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, Troy. Thank you for the discussion. Agenda referrals and information requests. Do we have anything this month?
Could we get information about student fees? Get an appeal on where those are at?
Through that, through Business Services.
Wherever.
Yep, okay.
Just, I, I've had a, a couple of parents just ask some questions, which I couldn't answer and, and referred them, you know, to their building administrators, but I just, I know things have changed and certain classes carry certain fees and.
We've reduced fees for the upcoming year, but we could provide you an update on that.
It just might be nice to, you know, thank you.
Next, we have Legislative Agenda. Troy, what do you have for us this month?
Perfect. Thank you, John. So a few things to look at, but it won't nearly be as long as last month's. The twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven state budget was signed into law last month. Madison and Wisconsin took a sliver of a break, but now legislators are gearing up for the policy-focused fall term in both chambers of the Capitol. During the remainder of the summer, committee hearings and votes will continue, bills will be introduced and legislators will spend time in their districts. All this will lead up to the September second through September eleventh floor period, absent any special sessions called forth by the governor, where K through twelve education policy could see a sizable amount of attention this fall. Themes over the course of the session that can give advocates an idea of where legislators might go in the coming months. Legislation introduced or passed in previous sessions is often dusted off and refurbished. This year, it's likely we will see numerous bills on staffing shortage solutions, referenda restrictions, private charter school funding and mandates, both curricular and policy-focused. Just taking a, a surface level look at a couple of those. The first thing pertaining to staffing shortage solutions, which I know I've talked about in the past couple of months. Every sector of Wisconsin's labor, labor market is feeling constraints, but education is perhaps one of the areas where the burden is most strong. Legislators from both sides of the aisle have traditionally been focused on this issue, although they take different approaches. One area where there seems to be a common approach is easing regulations that make it difficult for retirees to return to work. As talked about before, Senate Bill one seventy, WASB is looking at this bill closely. This would allow a WRS annuitant to return to work without suspending their annuity. While the bill was unable to make it across the finish line before the budget was signed, there are still plenty of opportunities for it to be made into law. Most recently, an amendment was introduced in the Assembly to remove the bill's provision that ends the proposed benefit after sixty months. The bill has received a hearing in both chambers prior to the amendment's introduction, though neither chamber's committee had approved it for passage yet. There is still plenty of appetite for this legislation and Madison and education advocates can continue to be encouraged that this bill means organizations and employers are lobbying for and, and looking to support this bill. The next topic I'll spend a second on is referenda restrictions. Bills on this topic were swirling around the Capitol prior to budget negotiations, but largely took a backseat during that time. However, given the budget included zero general aid, it is unlikely the trend of increasing operational referenda will slow anytime soon. This means these bills will definitely be on the top of mind for legislators as the fall session commences and districts begin to announce plans for future referenda at that time. Given Governor Evers' past statements, it is viewed as unlikely that he would sign any such legislation. However, legislators could use some of these policy ideas in the context of larger negotiations. Another item pertains to private and charter school funding. A common theme in the state with the oldest parental school choice program in the country, legislators are expecting to consider ways to both expand and simplify the current voucher and charter school funding methods. One of the ideas introduced last, last session was the concept called decoupling. The idea is to move funding for the parental school choice program and independent charter schools to an entirely state-funded appropriation. Currently, these programs receive some direct state funding, but are largely funded through a deduction to pupils' resident public school district state aid. The district can then choose to recoup those funds by increasing their property tax collections. Advocates of this change claim it will simplify the funding mechanisms, as well as ease the burden on local property taxpayers. Opponents claim it will reduce transparency of the program's effect on local districts and could set up expansion of these programs. I know that was a piece that at the Delegate Assembly was, was contentiously talked about. Some more to come on that. The last piece, mandates, both curricular and policy. As school leaders, this is a routine theme that has to be dealt with every session. Legislators on both sides of the aisle often propose mandates on school curriculum or board policy that align with their political views and opinions. Most of the time, these mandates are well-intended, I guess that's a questionable comment, but however, they often fail to provide any additional funding to districts to properly train and implement these new systems. Further than that, mandates passed in successive sessions pile up quickly and school leaders find themselves stretched too far in their time, resources, and ability. Unfortunately, there's not any indication that unfunded mandates are becoming a thing of the past. In fact, in an increasingly politicized world, more and more are introduced every year, it seems. Thankfully, divided government means few can be agreed upon by both parties. So more to come into the fall. I know at next month's update, we'll see what transpires as legislative business continues after that floor session. The next piece I want to mention is a new study released by the Wisconsin Policy Forum last week, found that Wisconsin has fallen further in the national rankings when it comes to per pupil education spending. Wisconsin now ranks twenty-sixth in the country for per pupil spending, while also failing to second to last of our neighboring states above only Iowa. The forum points to several familiar reasons for this decline. The primary reason listed is that general state aid increases, if any, in recent years have failed to meet the rate of inflation. The further point is shifting priorities in the legislature, such as prioritizing reducing taxes. The next piece, the new bill, a new bill recently circulated for cosponsorship aims to repeal the changes made to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-five state budget by Governor Evers' use of his partial veto authority to raise revenue limits by three hundred and twenty-five dollar a pupil annually until the two thousand four hundred and twenty-five school year. Authored by two senators in the upper chamber and two representatives in the lower chamber, this bill comes after the Wisconsin Supreme Court sided with Governor Evers in a case brought by the legislature, which sought to rule the move unconstitutional. So I will be sure to have an update on that. Our next piece. Following the new state budget, which included the release of funds for early literacy incentives, questions were raised about the implementation of these programs and whether funds spent in the last school year will now be eligible for reimbursement. On the Legislative Blog, as well as DPI, has provided information from the Ed Leaders' Dispatch to help address some of these questions. Hopefully, more information will be made available in the coming weeks pertaining early literacy updates on screeners, training, and curriculum. After a new state budget is signed into law, WASB has put out this resource comparing actual changes in revenue limits to prior inflationary indexing. One of the metrics that is tracked based on the member-approved resolutions is how increases, if any, to school district revenue authority compared with the rate of inflation. Currently, on the Legislative Blog, they have a chart with numbers for the recent state budget, comparing actual per pupil revenue limit changes to prior inflationary indexing and what that, what that difference may be. And that is all that I have, and that will take us to September.
All right, thank you for the report, Troy. Appreciate that. So we can move to approval of the bills.
I make a motion to note that July twenty-five receipts in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six thirty-five point three-two, and to approve the July twenty-five, twenty twenty-five disbursements in the amount of four million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars and nineteen cents. I'd just like to note that this is the month that most, most bills that they have to, or new school districts, if they have to do short-term borrowing, this would be the month that that happens. Thankfully, we have good financial stewardship, although we have not had to do that in multiple years now.
Okay, we have a motion to note July twenty-twenty-five receipts in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents, and to approve July twenty-twenty-five disbursements in the amount of four million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars and nineteen cents be approved. Can we have roll call, please, Chris?
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Stavensins?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Inda?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Chris?
I'd like to, or, um, I'm the, the actual budget report. Um, this is one of June, you guys approved the twenty-four, or twenty-five, twenty-six budget, however, the budget we built it, it's in a spreadsheet format, and notice it has zero-dollar budgets in there. And the reason for that is we don't know our staff, it's gonna be, we don't know what the health insurance, WRS rates, all that type of stuff, what our employees are gonna pick or not pick, getting insurances, much less, although we've all, the brands, which we just received that final data, which that, that work is gonna take place over the next, next couple of months. Those numbers, those budgets will be popular, and I would anticipate by November, we'll see the actual budgets.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Move on to new business. The first action, possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests. Anything new, Brian?
Yeah. We do have a shoot.
You can see the chairs are back, they're building, so you can fill aid positions that have opened up over the last month. You might recognize Lisa Budson, who's been teaching math, she was teaching fifth grade at Grant for a number of years, and then she was, as you said, in the math position, so she was, was eyeing about a couple of months ago, and now she is back, so excited to have her.
I would move to recommend approval of the following one-listed professional staff appointment.
We have a motion to approve of the one-listed professional staff appointment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Anything of note for the? Very good. Sorry, I was slowly counting. I move to recommend approval of the six listed support staff appointments.
We have a motion to approve the listed six staff, support staff appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, on the resignations side, I would move to recommend approval of the following listed professional staff resignation pending receipt of two thousand dollar liquidated damages.
We have a motion to approve the one-listed professional staff resignation pending receipt of two thousand dollars liquidated damages. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion?
I move to recommend approval of the four listed support staff resignations.
We have a motion to approve the four listed support staff resignations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. How we doing staffing-wise, Brian?
Not bad. It's not, I'm just, I'm just curious, like, so I've got a few.
Yeah, we're just gonna turn off the phones and emails off, nobody can contact us.
Well, thank you. Okay, next item, presentation from M3 Direct on direct primary care.
So Jen Cordy is here, who acts as our, really our broker for our insurance from M3, to provide a discussion of direct primary care. In your update this week, I supplied some background two weeks ago, some further this weekend, and then today, you did receive an email. Jen, I was not in the office late Friday afternoon, so I forwarded that to you today. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at that. We can review it all today as part of the presentation. This is an option that we would, are looking at as an attempt to. This is an option that we are looking at as an attempt to provide our employees access to quality healthcare, that they're not waiting at the urgent care, as well as to, as an attempt to reduce our healthcare costs in the long run. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jen. I don't know how much Jen has ever talked to the board here in Rapids.
I have 95 slides, and I'm going to read every one. I was supposed to hold literally 20 minutes, and there wasn't a lot of time for discussion. It is truly a pleasure to work with your executive administrative team. I've been working with them now the last two and a half years, so it is a pleasure to work with them. We always are discussing ideas, bringing topics, and this is one of them. So, I have Lori Almond with me today. She is here with Anovia, and then we also have Ken Strumisca, who is one of our partners with Anovia. And if you just slide down, I started on...
Yep, you just tell me where you're...
I'm going to give you my assistance to see if I can put you to work.
Yep. I'm actually going to plug the mouse in though, so it actually works.
It works. So, our agenda is we're going to go over the need for direct primary care, how it can work with our health plan. We're also going to go over why direct primary care. Rainy days ahead, it's appropriate to talk about health insurance. And rainy days ahead, I like it. We're laughing already when we're talking about health insurance, because nobody likes health insurance. We're also going to talk about, give you an introduction to Anovia, their service, their model, the cost of care. How can it impact our health plan here at Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools? How do we get our teachers and our staff and our members on the health plan to use direct primary care? As you know, we, I think late July, we got together in this room. We had about 30 to 35 individuals in the room that came to learn from all different avenues of your school district. We had paraprofessionals, IT, we had teachers, we had a board member. We had all different individuals in the room to come and learn. And here, part of the presentation that you're going to hear tonight, we're shrinking it down because we were actually here for two hours, but we surveyed them after the presentation, and we really got some great survey results and want to share those with you as well. So, why direct primary care? For those of you, just to give you a background on our health plan today, we are fully insured. So, we transfer all of our risk for every single member on our health plan over to Aspirous Health Plan, who is our fully insured partner. They set the plan design, they set the contracts, the networks, who our pharmacy benefit manager is. When we're fully insured, we don't have very much control. We get the plan design that we pay, we transfer the risk. Every year, it's been going up. Every year, we should have had a higher increase in what we've received, but we've had what we've called second-year-not-to-exceed rates that has locked us in for our health renewal. It's helping us this year. Ron's giving you a preview look of what that looks like, especially on that signature plan. So, healthcare cost is on the rise. Eventually, we would like to get self-funded. What self-funded means that Wisconsin Rapid Public Schools is the payer of those claims. We work with partners to manage the network, to pay the claims, do that, but we're the funding mechanism. What's great about self-funding is, in good years, we save those dollars as a district in our market. The bad news is, on the years where we spend more than what we fund, we're going to have to come up with those dollars. But the balance of self-funding is, we get to pick and play our partners, we get to steer our high-quality, low-cost providers and incentivize our members to make good healthcare decisions. We will always need hospitals, we will always need emergencies, because we all have critical care, hopefully not anytime soon, but those worst-case things happen, so we still need that hospital coverage, that catastrophic coverage. Right now, our health plan, our average cost per employee per year for public-sector employees in north-central Wisconsin is $23,700 a year. We offer two network plans in the district. One of them is the Signature Plan, which is our more, which is not, I'm not going to say more narrow, I almost did, but it's everybody but Marshfield. So, you've got Aspirous, you have Mayo and Rochester, you have UW Health, you have all the independents in Wausau, like Eye Clinic of Wisconsin, Bone and Joint, Orthopedic Procedures. Our average employee cost per year, so it takes a single and family plan in mix, divides it over our entire population, is $21,632. We're doing a great job on our Signature Plan. Our Freedom Plan, our average cost is $28,922. We saw that last year, and that's why we made that movement from Freedom to Signature, to try to get those employees on the right plan, to make the right choice, and steer those discounts the right way. Direct primary care, we know with our employers that are self-funded, that we can save 20% to 30% off emergency room, urgent-type care, and regular primary care with early prevention to stop some of those critical things that happen. Our average appointment with direct primary care is anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes. How long has it been since you've had a 30 or 60-minute appointment with your primary care provider? Expanded primary care services, so when we say "primary care," it's just not going in for your annual exam. I've got this mole that I don't want to talk to you about that's been changing colors, but I don't want it to go towards my deductible. I want this to still be my primary care visit. They can talk about things outside of the normal scope that you would with your primary care, which is great, and things are one-on-one. So, that's kind of the why of primary care. If you guys have questions, we can, we'll continue, we'll fill in some of the holes as we go along. But I'm going to bring Lori up here to give you an overview of the Anovia clinic.
Before she does, so we did a request for proposals...
We did.
...for direct primary care providers, and we received four bids back for us. Our local administrative team evaluated them with M3's assistance, and we felt Anovia was the, by far, the one that we'd recommend working with.
So, it's very surprising we actually had four bidders on direct primary care. So, this is becoming a bigger thing in north-central markets, especially as we saw Marshfield with their things, Aspirous with their changes over the past few years, losing Ministry Healthcare or Ascension Healthcare in the market. We're seeing more providers move to that direct space, and we're seeing these types of programs from an M3 perspective continue to grow, especially in public sector, especially in school districts. If you guys know your neighbors to the east, Stevens Point School District, they put this in 1-1. Actually, they started in October partnering with Anovia, and we have school districts to the north that are evaluating it as well, that all work with M3.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for having us. So, I just wanted to do a little bit of overview of who we are, and then I do want to introduce Ken Strumisca. Ken is our president and chief operating officer, and he is one of our founders. Anovia was founded in 2021 by Dr. Sabina Singh and by Ken Strumisca, and by default, I do have to say that Dr. Singh is married to Ken. Sometimes she will say that in person and out loud, sometimes maybe not, with one simple goal in mind, right? We wanted affordable, accessible healthcare for Wisconsinites and Midwestern groups, employers, and individuals. Dr. Singh was feeling the pinch that even all of our patients feel as you come to primary care. You have that 10 minutes to speak to your doctor, maybe you see them once or twice a year, and you come in and you feel so rushed, you don't have enough time to speak to them, to discuss things that can be taken care of at the primary care level, like Jen had stated, right? You can come in and we can discuss your mole, we can talk about your hypertension, your newly diagnosed diabetes, we can take care of your sleep apnea and read your CPAP machine, all of that if we had time. So, I just want a little tip of our hat, as we are the winner of the 2024 Hint Health Direct Primary Care Growth Award. And some quick stats about us, we have 10 shared clinic sites. Wisconsin Rapids would be our 11th site. We do have a site in mind and all set and ready to go, if given the word, but we have 10, and they're all in central Wisconsin. I'll show you a quick little map. As a member of Anovia, you can use any of our shared sites, so that helps, especially if you're living, maybe you're living in Stevens Point, but you work in Wisconsin Rapids, or you have a son that is in UW Eau Claire, and you're down in Appleton. Four onsite clinics. We have 95 employer partners, very similar to Wisconsin Rapids. Again, as Jen alluded, we have Stevens Point School District, we have Oshkosh School District, and we just recently opened our Menominee Clinic up in, by Chippewa Falls, Eau Claire, and we have Menominee School District. So, we're getting very familiar with the districts and the public sector. We have over 3,000, or excuse me, 30,000 patients, and we have 45 team members, including seven MDs and DOs, 17 nurse practitioners and PAs, and a small but mighty admin team of four. If you click on that link, Ron. Perfect. Nice. This is just a little video on...
And why you might have refused to go to the doctor in the past. We have seen all those...
Health, your first call for healthcare.
The providers at Anovia are real people who understand life, money, the barriers that people have to go to getting good healthcare, and why you might have refused to go to the doctor in the past. We have seen all those scenarios, and we get it, and we just want to take care of you the best way we can.
My patients often tell me that the most important thing for them is just to build a good, trusting relationship with their primary care provider. What that means is that they give us so much trust. They tell us delicate, intricate details about their health as well as their life. And with that trust, we are responsible for helping them navigate this complex system of healthcare that they have to make complex decisions for themselves in. And so, we are a calm and caring voice when they are ill, when they are uncertain about their health condition. We also act as advocates for them, walking them through this complex mountain of information that can present itself to them, to allow them to make the best decision for their health.
My goal is to find out what is best for each patient. Each person is unique, they're not in a box, and what I find joy in is establishing that patient-provider relationship and that trust, and knowing that there's going to be a plan for them in the end, and that I will be taking care of them, and they will be getting healthier.
Employers who use this strategy of using Anovia with their employees, they're doing it because they want their employees to have great healthcare. This is, first and foremost, it's about having great healthcare, and having great healthcare that is affordable, that's just icing on the cake.
Experience the Anovia difference. Each Anovia health patient's care is facilitated through small teams of caring professionals who know your need. To us, healthcare is not a transaction, but rather a relationship.
So, that, I mean, if you notice, they're in clinical settings, the office visit is like a clinic, like you walk into a private clinic that you have at your Aspirous facility or Marshfield facility, they set up just like a clinic would be. Like, keep going. Sure. Yeah, so what is the Anovia difference? Jen touched base on it a little bit earlier, but we have 30-minute or longer visits, 30 minutes, 60 minutes. If you're establishing care with us, it might be a 60-minute visit. We guarantee same-day access for anything acute, so you can come in on the same day for an ear infection, for strep throat, for the flu, maybe I got some sawdust in my eye and I need it washed out, anything that you would need to go in to see your primary right now and might not necessarily get in that same day. We can help facilitate it so you can go to, don't have to go needlessly to urgent care. We have those same-day appointments. We are physician-led staff, so that means we have a physician lead in our clinics, and they practice in that clinic maybe one to one and a half days a week, and the rest of the time is filled with what we call our APCs, our Advanced Practice Clinicians. So, those are your nurse practitioners and your physician assistants, and then we are rounded off our team with either an RN or a medical assistant. And it's really fantastic, and you walk in, we're very small clinics, all of our clinics are set up very similar, or maybe 2,000 square feet. You, very small waiting room, maybe two chairs and a table, because we don't double-book our appointments. So, your 2 o'clock appointment is your 2 o'clock appointment, and you'll go in, and you'll walk in, and you're greeted by an RN or a nurse, or excuse me, or a medical assistant. They are the ones that are taking your appointments. They will recognize that you're there, they'll say, you're like, hey, Erin, you're with Wisconsin Rapids School District, we're all set, we have you for 2 o'clock. They will room you, they will take your vitals, and you will see a provider within minutes. Then you have your visit, and with those 30-minute visits or longer, it gives a chance to have that provider and you as the patient sort of take that anxiety level down. You have more time, more time to think of things. No longer do you have to go on with blinders for your yearly exam where you cannot deviate from this question because you will be billed, and a patient will see that bill when it was supposed to be your free visit. You come in, and you can talk about your seven things that you had on your mind, and it is just a breath of fresh air. It's how it used to be, and it's how you can have this and manage your health and have your physician, your provider, really get to know you as a person and help you with, hey, I want to learn how to, I need to stop smoking, I'd love to lose weight, I have sleep apnea, can you help me with my CPAP machine so I don't necessarily have to go to pulmonology? Can you read my CPAP machine? Yes. Can you help me with mental health? You know, I have some anxiety and some depression. How, what can we do? What are my, what are my options? We can help you with that medication, we can connect you with your EAP program, we work really well with those, we can, you know, counsel you on many different things. As far as for what this means for the school district is, we have no long-term contracts, we will do a month-to-month contract with you, and we're flexible on your fee structure to meet your budget, and so that would be all of the finance that we'll talk about.
One thing I want to call out before we go past this slide is, when she says same-day or next-day appointments for acute care, the next bullet down is, those appointments are either face-to-face at a local clinic, meaning Wisconsin Rapids, meaning Stevens Point, Marshfield, wherever their preferred visit is, or it's telehealth, text, or email. So, how many times do you have staff in a prep hour where they've got a sinus infection or something else going on, and they want to be able to text, email, chat? That's a feature of this, too, besides being able to see that provider face-to-face.
That's awesome. Thank you. And the televideo and all of those different forms of modality are with your provider with Anovia. So, during hours and after hours, which is great, maybe you are newly diagnosed with high blood pressure, and we're going to put you on something, and we're going to change your diet, we're going to do this, come see us in two weeks to get your blood pressure rechecked. You could come into our brick and mortar, or to save time, if you're at Walmart, you can put your arm in a blood pressure cuff, take the blood pressure, you can text your provider, email, phone call, you know, any of those forms of modality, and it goes right to your provider. So, we like to say that we're the quarterbacks of care, and this is where it really gets interesting. We are the primary care providers. We can do anything from chronic disease management, health and lifestyle coaching, mental health and screening, the acute care. We do labs and imaging. Our labs are a pass-through rate for you at our client price, which is as close to app cost as possible. And that's where you'll find another big savings, and we'll talk about that a little bit, but for instance, you want to come in and it's your yearly exam, and you want to know what your cholesterol, a common lipid panel. You go into the system and get your blood gone for a lipid, it's going to be maybe $160 to $180. Our lipid panel is $11, and that is a huge difference, 80% to 85% lower than that one for labs. That's a really quick win for you as the district. And we do a little bit on occupational health, too. We will do pre-employment drug screens and pre-employment physicals if the job description fits along with what we can do. Otherwise, we will say, hey, maybe you want to go to physical therapy for oc health, but we'll work with you on that. And then, as we go through, and where you're really going to see some downstream savings is how we connect you with other partners going forward. When you become self-funded, we can funnel a lot of our referrals to those high-value, low-cost options. You need an MRI. Here, patient, are your options. You can go into Marshfield and get an MRI for $2,300, or maybe you want to drive to Wausau and go to SmartScan where that same MRI is $650. That saves the plan a lot. We'd have to figure out ways to incentivize your patient, employee, to use this.
But the point of that is, is that they're starting to help navigate the care because they know who our partners are for providers. When you're a member and you're not feeling well, the last thing you want to think about is what price my MRI is going to be at or what that's at. They know as your expert, they do an onboarding with us at M3 to know your health plan, to say who are our preferred partners, to help with that steering, to say, hey, let's see if we can get them into SmartScan versus somewhere else, or knee replacement surgeries at OMS, OSMs is $25,000 versus $60,000 a knee. So, they have those conversations, and they can do it in a consultative approach and take it out of the district's hand in the steering, they're doing that at the clinic level. But that's probably two years away yet, that's when we're self-funded. yet. That's when we're self-funded. We're fully insured now. So we're tied to the network that we have with Aspiris. So Gamber Johnson is an M3 client. They also work with Anovia. They are self-funded. So they have these networks in place where they steer to different providers. You can see that their estimated savings by working with Anovia was $730,000 between labs, primary care, steering and imaging, surgical and more.
Yes. And this group, this is their 2024 data for the entire year of 2024. And something to note is this, this Gamber Johnson, they have 167 lives on their plan, whereas you would have 1,600-ish on yours.
So much smaller.
Much smaller scale, but you're seeing that, you know, obviously in the primary care level in labs, that is great use with Anovia. And then how we help steer is where you're going to see all of their other savings as far as surgical, even your PBM, your pharmacy benefits. And here we are, we're growing and innovating. We are in central Wisconsin, but we're also in the Fox Valley. We're in Anago, Appleton, onsite at Applied Laser Technology. We're in Clintonville, DePere. We are onsite at Gamber Johnson. We just opened in Oshkosh, May 1. We're in Marshfield. We just opened in Menominee on August 4th. Merrill, Stevens Point, shooting metals onsite, and then in Weston. And then our plan would be to open up in Wisconsin Rapids as well. Like I said earlier, we have a site located and we have our providers set and ready to go. So as a member of Anovia, you can use any of our clinics.
And there may be a second location in the Wausau market as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
One advantage about the Menominee site is we have many faculty or staff that have children that go to UW O'Clare. And our current plan, health plan does not have any coverage in the O'Clare area. So this would open up an option for them.
So Madison, you know, my son just graduated from UW Oshkosh. So that would be an option. Any of the UW systems other than, I forget, but we would have options for all of those.
Okay. So what does the proposal look like? So this is us trying to summarize it as simply as possible. So looking at the 2026 plan year, so the middle figure's there. The standard figure is $30.450 per member per month. Per member does not mean per employee. Per member means per belly button on the health plan. So husband, wife, kids is $34.50 per month. So when we look at our current number of belly buttons that are on the health plan, we have 1,644. Times that by $34.50, times 12, we get $680,000 and change. October through December, because we're implementing and starting a brand new clinic, Anovia did an amendment. So when you saw that initial email come through from Ron, there's an amendment that has the October through December pricing where they're actually doing $34.50 per adult on the plan. So anybody that's 18 and older on the plan would be towards $34.50. And we have 1,249 adult members. So think employee, spouses and any dependent child over age 18. So our estimated cost for three months there is $130,000. So part of this does not have the labs. That $34.50 is for the number, however many times a member wants to go into a clinic, do a FaceTime, text, email, it's unlimited. We have a high deductible health plan. Prior to the big beautiful bill, we would have to charge a copay if it was outside of their annual exam for preventative care. With the big beautiful bill passing, they said direct primary care relationships. Anovia falls into this, we don't have to charge a copay for other visits. Stevens Point School District charges $10 for every time they go into Anovia. We would not have to do that. It could be a zero copay. It would be free since that had recently passed in the past month, right? That was July. So our first 15 month projected cost is $809,000, or it's just roughly under $810,000. As a partner, Anovia led the RFP process because they approached it as a partnership of wanting this to work for, not only for the Wisconsin Rapids School District is very important, but for the Wisconsin Rapids community as well. So as you being the first employer to help start this clinic, as we get more patients enrolled or more members enrolled, so say the city of Wisconsin Rapids or Midstate Technical College or other businesses become partners of Anovia, they will give us credit for those members. If we get 2,500, so we add 1,000 members, the business needs to be based in Rapids, not the member, but the business has to be based in Rapids, I think is how we clarified it. So if we get up to 25 enrolled patients at this specific location, we would get a reduction in our fee of 50 cents per member. At 3,000, it's 75. At 3,500, it's a dollar. So they want to be able as that lead partner to share in that investment. They know this is a hefty investment for the district because this is above and beyond our premium contribution and expense that we have. So the services covered is the care team visit fee, tele-call 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, basic phlebotomy services, in-office procedures, workers' comp visits for those that are on the health plan. You can send workers comps, people there that aren't on the health plan, but you may be billed separately for those or it goes through your workman's comp insurance. You did get an additional addendum schedule for lab fees, imaging and medications that are filled onsite. Those would be at cost and billed. We had an estimate, I believe, of $1,600 a month. I thought I threw it up on that top slide. Can you go up one? I don't see it there. I think it was $1,600 a month. We were going to budget about $25,000 basically on that, that first year. So.
I just needed to say a little bit on this slide. Thank you Jen. The, we have after hours. So it's not just the 7 A to 7 P. They can be later if an emergency comes in and you're, or if there's, you know, the middle of the night, your son wakes up crying and you know, this is his fourth ear infection in three months and you know, you could call in a, hit option two and it goes to our provider. We're old school providers on call. And that provider will call back. And then that's when we triage you, either a video call or just over the phone, like, yes, you can treat it now, or yeah, maybe you really should go into urgent care. We had a recent employer out of the Merrill area, just at the clinic, and one of my colleagues called in and their son had strep over the weekend, the holiday weekend. So it was the emergency room. Anovia was able to call the prescription for, to start them on antibiotics over the weekend and then did a follow-up that week instead of sending them into emergency or urgent care on a holiday weekend. So that was really great. So impact on our health plan. As you guys know, Ron's been very transparent of where our health plan has been. Our May 2024 through April 2025, our medical, our claims have been 15,000 or 15 million. We would love it if it was 15,000. 15,424,000. Of that 15 million, 6.4 million is professional services. So that's primary care, that specialty care providers. It is really your doctor's fees, right? It's not your hospital because hospitals build up separately. Emergency and urgent care is $852,000 of that 15.4. Our premiums are at 12.7. That's employer and employee contributions. We are in the hole $2.7 million. Aspire's health plan is losing on those. Our medical loss ratio is at 121%. As Ron shared, our previous month, they look at it a monthly and a running 12. The 121 is a running 12 months. Our previous month was 170% loss ratio, 170. So we continue and that's what we basically look at, claims based on premiums paid in, where are we at? We are an attractive group when our medical loss ratio is between 85 and 90%. That's our target area of where we want to be because medical loss ratio does not include in a health insurance plan's admin fees of about 10%, right? So Aspire's runs pretty lean, eight to nine percent. They want to make 2% margin. They're not collecting admin fees. They're not making margin and they haven't for some time up there is what you'll see. So statistics say that DPCs can save 20 to 30% on future medical costs. I am conservative going into this because we are fully insured. We play a flat premium going in. If we had 5% savings on the 15.4 million, it would be 771,000 minus the clinic, we'd be in the hole $40,000. If we get 10% savings, we save 732. And you can see the numbers as we go along. If we looked at just 20% savings on professional services, it's, I'm turning that magical age this year and I can't see.
478.
478. Thank you very much. So there's my lab performed at cost, $1,600 per month. We're going to be budgeting labs around 20 grand for this next year if it's done at Anovia versus being done on the health plan. So this is a long-term investment. We probably will not see a dollar-for-dollar offset with Aspire's health plan just being fair going into, because they want you to be able to use your plan design is to steer to Aspire's. They, they really don't want us steering away with the health plan. But they are willing to partner with direct primary care integrated in there. Our savings is directly correlated to utilization. If our members, our teachers, our staff do not use this clinic, we will not have the savings. It's a mindset. Change requires change. We want to get to self-funding. We got to think about our, our staff being better consumers. And this is one way to do it. And they have a dedicated health team to help them with that. So there's ways that our area employers are incentivizing utilization. How are they doing it? They require biometrics. So this is why we have a, a price between October and December. Biometrics, maybe some of you have this at your employer, where nurses come onsite and they check your height and your weight and your, your basic labs. And they say, oh, if you've got elevated blood pressure, maybe you should go into coaching, those kinds of things. They can do that with that annual visit. Biometrics are typically $65 per employee to have them run on average. We can have them treated for their, with the pricing that you saw there. So biometrics is a way to incentivize. We've also talked as a team about using HSA employer contribution is dependent on their utilization by a certain date. They get half of their HSA contribution in January and they get the other half in August?
September.
September? September. So the January contribution could be contingent on if they've had at least one visit at Anovia between October and December, meaning they have to earn part of that HSA contribution, that January contribution. If you don't use the clinic, you don't get the employer contribution or you don't get half of it. But what kind of skin in the game do you give to members to use a benefit kind of like this? We did talk about this with the employees and we, we talked about it at length as well. Or you may do no incentive. Stevens Point School District, they do incentives into their HSA based on whether you use the clinic or not, made it very successful. Some employers are doing their premium based on whether or not you use the clinic. You get a lower premium if you use the clinic versus not using the clinic. So those were ideas that we talked about. Where we're kind of leaning towards our recommendation is playing with the HSA contribution. You get half in January only if you use the clinic this fall. If you don't use the clinic, you would get your contribution in September is where we're kind of leaning, but we've not decided that. Implementation of the clinic looks like this. We're, we're here tonight. We're in August. It's already here. So we're presenting to the school board for final approval. We would start implementation right away. We have the sites are ready to go, pending approval for this.
Not ready to go.
Well, not ready to go.
We're ready to lease.
Ready to lease. The lease is contingent on, on your group. We do have providers. So initially, we wanted to have the clinic open October, but we're already mid-August. So it could be late October, early November, which Anovia will partner with us. We can either decide to, to wait to kick off to November 1st, or we can say you can use Stevens Point, Marshfield or other locations in October. Depending on how we feel we're going to get the best engagement is how Anovia will partner with the district.
Fair?
Yeah. Yeah. So on a, on a average, we take about 90 days from start to finish to, to open a clinic. We currently have a site. It needs paint and it needs carpet. It needs a few things and then we need to order our, our supplies and our exam tables and all of that. So a conservative S would be November 1 would be really good. And we'd love to say November 1, but well, maybe October 15th. But November 1 is a fair assessment for go-live. But like what Jen said is, you know, they can, you can certainly have your employees use any of our other clinics too, if that is an option for that interim until we're up and fully functioning in Rapids.
So part of implementation, part of utilization is we would do a rollout. We would do it open enrollment meetings. We would educate the employees. We've asked, asked the employees that were here if they would be a clinic friend and speak about it, their experience, be one of the first employees in to give testimonials. Because if you use it and you share it, it takes the worry off of others as well. Anovia does provide quarterly reporting and utilization. So we'll know engagement, we'll know where we have white space, like do we have a dead time from eight to three every single day? Because teachers are in class, staff are in school. You know, what does that look like? And we partner with, they partner with all of us to make the best results. So we did do surveys.
Can I just interject for just one moment?
Yep.
Just so, so you're aware of how we kind of have it going for our Stevens Point clinic is the teachers do call, you know, we, even though we guarantee same day access for anything acute, we ask that you call. We're not quite that walk-in urgent care. So, but we have them now that employees, especially teachers, will call and say, I'm on my prep period. So we know that we are getting you in and out and we'll see you and it will, you know, so that's why again, we don't double book. So if your prep period's at 11 and we know that you're on your prep, we'll get you there and back in time.
And their clinic's actually in the Plover Whiting areas where I would describe it. So you know, you've got your SPAS teachers driving all the way down. It's not really located right next to a school. So they are driving across town to get to those appointments. So we had 24 respondents out of the survey and these were the basic questions. The feedback on them were overall positive. Do you see value in the district offering DPC arrangement? 22 were yes, two said no. Would you personally engage? 19 said yes, four said no. One of the no's added a comment, I don't have the school district health insurance, so I can't, I can't use it. So that is one of the no's, to be fair and transparent. A lot of them, we actually had a staff person in the room that already pays Anovia out of pocket to use their service and gives a great testimonial on how great it was. I would say 98% of the, all the comments were overly positive. There was just one person that said, no, I really like my current primary care provider in my, my team. I would prefer to stay using them, but I would do the value with the labs and talk to my primary care provider about doing my labs through Anovia. So.
Right. And we, and we say that we're not going to win every single person and come to Anovia. If you have your provider that you've had for 15 years and you love them and you do not want to change, that's great. But we educate your employees, your staff to say, wonderful, keep that primary. Think of us for acute because more, more than likely you're not getting in with your primary. And think of us for those labs. It is okay to advocate for yourself and say, can I get my order because my company pays for my labs? Yes. We receive the order. We have a phlebotomy area in all of our clinics. We draw the blood. We'll send it out to Quest Diagnostics. When we get those results, we send it to your primary provider or your specialist. So it's very, very helpful and those are the easy wins. We have a transplant patient who used to have to go down to Fragerd all the time for their labs. Expensive, time-consuming, stressful. We get their labs now. We get the results and send it right to their specialist. So there is some real quick, easier wins with that.
So the electronic medical record, they will share with primary care providers, with specialists so that there is continuity of care, that that care is not broken upon request, those different things, so that those things can happen. Just like if you were to switch care from Marshfield to Aspire's, those things sometimes take time, but they do have that available that's there. So as you can see, the results were really good. What incentives are most appealing? Maintain current HSA contribution, keep premium the same on signature. Neither. Of course, we don't want change. And 17 of the 24 said yes, they would be a clinic friend. So if they engage with the clinic, they would like to be one of those co-sponsors. So that was a lot of information and a little bit probably longer time than you wanted us to take. But questions that you guys have? I know Elizabeth was there.
Elizabeth and John were there from the board.
And I, I mean, I came for the presentation. I hung around after any of the attendees wanted to share thoughts. And the, the ones that did share thoughts with me were really reflective in what you saw in the survey. Most of them were interested, willing to try, you know, concerns of, I like my doctor, I want to stay with it. But overall, it seems like there was. But overall, it seems like there was positive feedback. I think the staff member, as you alluded to or spoke about, who currently pays for this service outside of the district, had really, really great things to say about it, so.
And I think in the world we live in today with the cost of healthcare going up as much as it is, there's very, very little we can do. That number one, tries to get a handle on cost, and number two, helps our employees. And I think that this has the potential to do both. I mean, we'll see if the employees use it, if they get engaged with it, but it could be a positive outcome and help to somewhat control cost. I'm not sure what else we could possibly do. I mean, it's just moving monies around and shifting who pays for what at the end of the day.
So this is, strategy is when I became superintendent that Brian and Candy and Aaron and Craig had been looking at with M3. Expedited a little bit due to our high. You saw, you saw a hundred and twenty-one percent usage rate. We have our tentative renewal rates that are sitting there, and our signature plan was capped at nine point five in the second year renewal.
And it's going to come in at a nine point five?
Yep. And the Freedom Plan is above that. And if Aspiris Health Plan needed to break even on that two point nine, you can do the math yourself, but it's probably about a thirty-seven percent increase.
Right around thirty-eight percent is where the renewal calculated, but because we had negotiated that second-year rate cap, we're at nine percent. So while nine percent hits your budget really hard, I have to advocate that Aspiris Health Plan has been a good partner of yours, based on the numbers that you're seeing. And that's just not one numbers. We can probably show numbers like that unfortunately for three years running. And the goal is, we want to become an attractive group to either come self-funded or become more attractive for other and fully insured carriers to want to bid on us and go up to market. Why would an insurance carrier invest so much money in a school district? Right? You bring lots of belly buttons to their contracts in one easy grab. I think the number on the screen was nineteen hundred members. So as they go out to negotiate contracts with UW Health, they say, we have nineteen hundred members in this location, and those members help them get better contracts when they are setting up their networks. So that's why school districts have been, A, been so attractive, two, they're a nonprofit, they want to have the investment in the community, having their name with Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools is important to them as well. I used to work on the carrier side, not at Aspiris, at another one. So when we sat in those meetings, those were, that was why my former carrier would invest in the district because of that member grab. So you've actually benefited from that.
I know we've been, last sixty-eight years we've been talking about the possibilities of self-funding because we've had very high usage rates for a long time. It hasn't been this high. I mean, we were probably ninety-five to a hundred and five, depending. So this is becoming higher and higher, and we had discussed it briefly in the past, but I think it's a serious thing, and I think this is a very good, positive direction. And we, to incentivize, you know, give them the incentives as we got to tie the HSA to it.
So I think there were two of the major concerns that I heard that night with employees. One was, do I have to change my provider? And the answer is no.
Correct.
But I also shared with them that, much like when we moved to the Aspiris Health Plan, we had, I've been in this district thirteen years, we've had security health plan, I think we had the county's association at one time, we've had W. So there's no guarantee that when our contract is up, that your provider may be in the lowest benefit. You're still always going to be able to see your provider, but you may have, it may be entirely out of pocket, it may be a higher deductible. So there's no guarantee as we go through, if we bid out insurance in a year, that we'll stay at Aspiris. Maybe something will come in lower than it, I just don't know what that will be. So I can't guarantee anybody's going to be able to at the current price point that they're at. And I just lost my second, my other second thought was, well, you're really taking that HS away, HSA away from us. That HSA was put in, I think about eight years ago, and the comment back then was, this is not always going to be here, begins trying to save a little bit in your HSA. We've been lucky to maintain that, but it may be a way to continue to maintain that or an HRA or something similar, but to drive some usage. People can try Anovia because always something new is what's scared.
I would say that you guys are not unique as a school district. Every school district in our market, us not having a third provider system really hurts for competition-wise. We're down to two provider systems. We've also seen WDA used to provide fully insured health plans, they left the market. So we have less carriers to work with, we have less provider systems. That's not going to be an uncommon trend as we go forward. So this is really about providing access to quality care, all-encompassing, full primary care, just not preventative, at no cost to the employee. It's definitely an investment in the district. And having that communication to the employees that this benefits you eventually down the road, one, right now, at no cost. Two, we want to tie this to premiums eventually down the road to drive utilization down. Three districts to your north are evaluating the same decision. One's already implemented, so as you look for, I always balance these two out when we have our meetings between budget versus recruitment and retention, right? This is a really good recruitment and retention, even though it's a very big budget item, you know? So we also think about that as where, what levers can we pull? How does it affect the recruitment and retention side as we can drive to other neighboring districts versus the budget side of it too?
So there's, as Jen said, this is not a cost savings initially. The hope is, is that years down the road, it is a cost savings for us that our utilization at labs, pharmacy, et cetera, may be reduced, which makes us more attracted to becoming self-funded or a more attractive bid option for a fully insured plan.
Yeah. Roughly numbers, because you're fully insured, these costs are going to be built into your plan, but we're already at a deficit, right? With the health plan that we have fully insured. A neighboring district who has a fully insured plan, their utilization, I believe, over the first six months, if they would have taken those visits out into the marketplace versus their admin fee, that their monthly, per member, per month fee over that six months was a seven hundred thousand dollar savings. Now, we are in the hole already, so that's going to take longer to compound to get out, but there were savings out there. But again, that was an example where it was tied to their HSA, so you've got to do some incentivizing there.
So as talked about in the presentation, we don't know exactly what that incentive's going to be like, because we're kind of grouping that a little bit in as we look at what our insurance renewal rate is. Aaron, when he last shared with you the budget update as a district, we are budgeting initially a seven percent health insurance increase, and the last budget we gave you, or that Aaron shared, was a nine and a half. This is not built into that budget. So this would be above and beyond into the deficit that we're projecting for the upcoming year. We will probably, we will have one-time money coming in from the Act Twenty reading reimbursement that we had paid for the reading materials with, so we will have one-time money coming in. But as this pursues, this will have to get built into the budget, and it's going to be part of that larger healthcare conversation of what it looks like with our healthcare costs as a district.
And I think too, we'll have to be cognizant of, if this clinic doesn't open until November first, to try to funnel everybody through it in two months for incentives, probably is not going to be successful.
Correct.
Just from people's perspective to say, well, you're trying to railroad us into this.
Correct.
We didn't even have time to make an appointment, now you're saying that, you know, I won't get part of my.
Yes. That will be our discussion as we pursue this, as the larger healthcare conversation in the district. The model we're on is not sustainable for the long-term budgetary for the district as well as budgetary for the employee, because every time it goes up, that impacts their pocketbook as well.
Can I just ask, how does Anovia maintain quality care professionals? I know that it's difficult in this area for us to, for Aspiris to attract quality medical professionals.
Right.
And now, you know, and you said you already have people lined up to come in, and I'm just curious about that.
No, that's a fantastic answer.
Because it's hard to get doctors to come here and stay.
Would you like to take that answer? Or do you think that answer can?
So first of all, the hardest thing to prove is a physician, right? So we do have a physician waiting to work. He's had a permanent solution, because physicians always have a not leave. So this person is from the Fox Valley, he's going to come over here. So he's going to get a study. And then we have one or two ABCs, inter직원, or physician assistants who are interested in coming on board with us. It takes about a 90-day. So we're most likely taking somebody from a system to come to work for Anovia. As far as quality, first of all, I will tell you the, the, the basic response is you'll let us know if the quality's not what you think it is. Your, your employees will tell us and they'll tell us and your HR people, wherever they are, they'll come and tell us. So you're, you're going to, you're going to make it very clear. There's no accreditation for primary care. But, you know, we have, there's going to be a national study that comes out on us next month. We didn't have funded, but it's, our patient satisfaction is, the network score is, are they're in the 90% range, which a network is usually about 25 to 30% patient satisfaction. So if we only do primary care, that's what we're going to be great at. So it's not a great answer, but it's true.
And most of our recruiting actually is from our own current providers. So the physicians that we have hired recently are our current physician saying, we know this person, we know this person. So it's, it's a nice word of mouth that way.
Very good question. They have more providers outreach to them to find out where they're going next. Interesting. Yeah.
And if you looked on a deed, we do have an ad right now for our, for nurses and we're getting a nice interest.
I'll just mention, I work for a local financial that acquired Anovia in January and the education and the, the awareness and the implementation has been very positive, so.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions, seamless, then go through committee or? No. I mean, it's fine if you say no, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's not really a public comment, although I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, just because normally it goes through committee where questions are more asked. Can you talk a little bit about lab turnaround time? Because you mentioned that they're outsourced to Quest.
Sure. We, we go through Quest Diagnostics, which is very common and a lot of the network systems use Quest as well. Common labs are about a 24-hour turnaround. Anything that's just a little bit more unique can be anywhere from 48 to 72 hours. But when we get those results, and we will let you know, like that your provider will say, this is an odd, they're a different lab than normal, you know, we're going to, it might take five days, four days. But that's going to be pretty much standard across the board and Quest Diagnostics is very highly renowned and we use them in all of our clinics.
So I would say that most of them, they're picked up in the afternoon, 5:00, we get the, the result back the next morning. So they're going to say 24 hours, probably 8% of them are within, you know, eight hours.
And if it's something severely acute, there's a, there's a time and place for emergency and there's still a time and place for urgent. Our health plan is fully insured, so it will still cover a network that we have today. It will still cover emergency urgent hospitals because we will still always need hospital and we will still also need specialists that can't be done in primary care or lab tests that should be done at the clinic system. And the, they are, they're recommending the best path for care. So maybe there's been times where people have gone into Anovia and this is better suited for emergency room. They may start something at Anovia and then get you transferred over. So it's not that it's going to be a barrier to traditional health system it's in conjunction with. Makes sense.
Can you talk a little bit about pediatric patients? Because they're a little bit unique in lots of ways.
Sure. So.
Sorry.
So traditional primary care, as we practice, is global from first grade, right?
Sure.
Yeah. So, so primary care covers pediatrics. We do recommend though for people with children under two, they have pediatricians because kids can get sick very quickly and immunizations. We don't do first 24 months of immunization. So that's, that's true.
So we currently don't have access to those immunizations. So as an infant, we'll recommend that you use your pediatrician for those immunizations. But we will do well childs and say, hey, you're due for these. And then as the child gets older, I believe it's age five, where we can say, hey, you're due for these immunizations. You can actually go to Walgreens or you can go to Costco or you can go wherever and get those.
To your pediatrician.
And get those immunizations. And then we can help the, the well child and then we can see the acute, you know, well, we have providers now that see infants for acute, but as Ken had said, some of them, yes, we can see your child for thrush. We can see your child for an ear infection. If it's a really high fever and we can't get it down, we probably will send you a pediatrician. But we, we like to have that tagline of let us be your first call for healthcare and then we will help triage and quarterback that to the necessary.
I have one more. So if this is the step towards self-funding, right? So I think the thought is that the savings that would be seen would kind of bring our loss ratio down to that 100-ish, 89-ish, whatever, whatever. I mean, because if we're over our loss ratio right now, I guess, is the district in a financial position that if we do go self-funding, I mean, where's the district going to get those extra funds for if, if that makes sense? I mean, so if our usage is like 120 and we're self-funded, where's the district going to get the 20%?
We're, we're not going to self-fund at 120% because if we were to self-fund it at, with a 120% loss ratio, our costs would actually be probably 135% of where we're at today because there's admin, there's contract fees, there's additional things. Because that loss ratio is premium versus claims, nothing else. No admin, nothing else that's built in there, just truly premiums versus claims. We have to see, start driving change to behaviors for health plan to change where we get to self-funded. Self-funded is going to probably be a two to three-year route. We continue to look at it every single year of budgeting where it's at. I think we looked at it this year and it looked at like a 40% rate increase to be self-funded versus fully insured. But we see other districts being successful with stop-loss captive, higher levels of driving that care and putting different things in place with those direct contracts, with steering and having the care done where it needs to be done. One of the things we have to evaluate right now is there's no other place where we're going to get a better discount than with Aspiris Health Plan. They give themselves a better discount. So we evaluate that discount and that networking there too. This is a long-term strategy. We can't continue with the 10 to 12% increases when we're already upside down because we're not going to get ahead of it. So this is, this is a step in that direction. This is a long-term strategy. Once employer groups get self-funded with the appropriate premium, typically three out of five years, they see a savings. Two out of five years, there can, we say are bad years, where you're close to that 100% or you're slightly over it.
And the other thing with self-funding, you still have premiums.
Correct. Yeah.
So the employee is still paying premiums.
Correct.
You just want to try to knock them down reasonably.
Correct.
And that's, it's, as Jen said, it's a, it's a long-term strategy. We will continue to look at it. But if, and anything, if this can drive down our loss ratio to 102% or 105%, that'll make us more attractive when we go to bid for fully insured. Because we'll have to be looking, because we only have a one-year stop-loss really on what our premium increase is.
We don't have an NTE for 2027 at this point in time. We've not signed our renewal for 2026. This was our first step in our plan and then we continue to go back with Aspiris to discuss where we have options.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the proposed contract with Anovia Health for the district staff to participate in their direct primary care clinic services at a cost of $34.50 per enrolling per month as presented.
And can I just ask a question really quick? This is, we're not talking, this does not include any incentivizing, anything with the TIP.
Not right now.
I was going to say right now. Just want to be sure.
And I would say it's per member a month, not per enrolling. So $34.50.
Per member per month.
Okay, we have a motion to approve of the proposed contract with Anovia Health for district staff to participate in their direct primary care clinic services at a cost of $34.50 per member per month as presented. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mr. Inda?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenshins?
Yes.
Mr. St. Myers?
Yes.
Chris? And it takes us to the calendar. We look ahead, our meeting, reception meeting, we have the new colleague motion this week, Tuesday, the 19th. On the 22nd, we have the WRPS education update on the Rapids Report podcast, as well as the all-staff welcome back and the PHSA again. Reminder that September 1st is Labor Day, so our committee meetings will be on September 2nd, which is Tuesday. It's also the first day of school. So geez, someone went by quickly.
It's going quick.
Yeah. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
And we need, if you, any board member going to that meeting, we need to let Chris know so she, or if it's already going to be.
Back, back to school?
Yeah.
Back to school.
On the 19th, it'll be posted.
19th and the back to school.
Yeah.
I'll post them both.
Hopefully we'll post that.
It could be.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
[inaudible]